Township Plan Commission to Order. First, we have the Brokaw.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Powers, Staff Planner.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road. Item number three is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Make a motion to approve. Support.
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting on July tenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we come to public comment, and this is a public comment period that you can comment on anything you want, doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda, or you can wait until the end of the meeting, which is also another public comment period. Is there any public comment at this time?
Thank you, ma'am. Bonnie Johnston, I live at four five zero, County Road five fifty. And I was at the last one that we had for Phil's five fifty. And felt that township had already made up their mind before we came, and I'm sure it's the same today. And I have no problem with Mason's place. But I would like to know what your plan is for if there's more coming in the store somewhere back on Debbie's place, your property that the store owns. Because it has changed. I mean, those are very quiet away back there. My cousin, it's right in his backyard. Between new places. And it just changes. If there's going to be more and more coming, because it was only going to be two. And I've heard that there's going to be more. It's not a very good feeling to come to these meetings. I feel like school board meetings, when you go and you know that they've already made up their mind and go ahead and say what you want to say, but entity or whatever is already decided. And I have one more thing to say. I live across the road from a neighbor whose property is probably one of the worst properties for people. Everybody that goes north on Big Bay Road has to look at this. I'm talking, speaking about this. And I have come to the township twice to ask what's the deal with taking care of that property. And very nice guy that I talked to, and he told me last time that the county, I think he said the county, the DQ, the state were working on it. So I asked him, well, how am I going to know? When you guys are doing something, because there's nothing happening. Every once in a while, they take a load of something out of there. That's a little bit urging. But it's, you should fly your drone if you have one over that. You would. It's bad. So my taxes do not go down. I live right across the road from them. I'm sure Fort and Stone to go down, or anybody else is there. But that pile over there keeps growing. So if I were to want to sell my home, that would not be a good thing for me or anybody around there that tries to keep their homes up. So I just want you guys to be thinking about that place. Well, they said they were. I don't know what's happening. So I know some things that bring money in are really important, we get it done. And other things don't seem to be as important for somebody that has a problem like I have. And they're good neighbors. They're not been bad neighbors. That's not the point. They just don't care. They just don't care because they're thinking of other things. So that's all I have to say.
Excuse me, ma'am. What was your name?
Bonnie Johnston.
Ms. Johnson, you know, you may think that we have our minds made up ahead of time. I can assure you that I do not. And I can also assure you that I understand what a blight is, because I live next door to one. And I've been dealing with it for five years. So we're working on it as hard as we can, but it's a very difficult process to go through. And we're doing the best we can. We're working on a new blight ordinance as well. It has to go through the judicial system, so, you know, we're not ignorant to it, you know. I empathize with what you're going, seriously empathize with what you're doing. And I personally never make up my mind ahead of a hearing.
Yeah, and we really have a stretch. And I shoot, my boys collected scrap, my husband collected scrap, so I got my own little pile over there. But this is ju, I mean, I don't know how many of you guys, if you walk by there, actually, this is not a good time because of the trees. You go by there in the spring or in the fall, when the leaves aren't down, I mean, are down. It's, tourists that goes up there, they must say, what, I didn't know there was a new junkyard on the Big Bay Road. That's what looks worse than that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? And just to remind ourselves that during the public comment period, the commissioners will not interact with the public. We can address this after the public comment period is over. Yes?
I'm Megan from Barry Poulson's office, and I'm just here, I just wanted to let you know that we are here, we're in a BARRY Development LLC. It was unable to meet the meeting tonight, but if you have questions when you get to item D on new business, we're here.
Thank you.
Hi, Terry Trubisho, three five eight County Road five fifty. I came here with Mrs. Johnston to say we have no problem with Mason and his family coming and doing what they want to do. I live directly behind him, and I'm almost touching Middle Island Point property where the railroad track is. We've had lots of, lots of problems the last couple months. But coming up to me, who has lived there for over forty years, and telling me I cannot be on the property. I've been given permission from at least six people that have homes, nearly homes on that road, on Middle Island Point Road, to be able to go there. She told me now that Mrs. Trubisho said that you have to, you know, even though her husband gave me permission to be out there, that I have to decide, or they have to decide with votes from all the people that live there of what can be done about, you know. Like, I just walk my dog and even used to ride my horse down there and stuff. But I just wanted to bring that up because it's still, there's still a lot of talk going on about all that, so I want you to know that he just didn't drop it. And then the same as Bonnie, that we had that terrible accident on our road the other day, or last week, a couple weeks ago. And then when I came home from Big Bay that night, there was the house, three houses before me, and their last name, Tula. They had an explosion in their house, or in their garage. And the road was all blocked off and stuff. And I went up to the gentleman standing there blocking the thing and asked him, you know, what's going on? I had no idea. We came right when it had happened. But all the neighbors were out in the, out in the streets and stuff. And they said that a car blew up. Well, it was like Bonnie, across from Bonnie's house, that house also is in terrible dismay. Even where I live, which would kind of be two properties away, there's a stench all the time there and stuff. And I was afraid when I came home that night, because there was such a bad smell, that somebody said it could be toxic. So I went up to that gentleman, the fireman, and asked him, and he said, as far as we're know, you know, there was no, you don't have to worry about anything, you know, I've got animals and me and stuff, and I just wanted to make sure that that was okay to be at home at that time. So I'm also saying, you know, what about having to tell people, hey, you have to clean up your yard or something, you know? And I guess that's all, guys.
Terry, would you please spell your last name?
T R O. T O. C H. A U D.
And your address again, please?
Three five eight.
You, uh,
County Road.
County Road five fifty. Thank you. Thank you. Any?
Mason Pierce, I'm here for Agenda Six B. I don't know if I should have waited until that came up for the public comment, but I'd just like to say a couple words about my intentions with property.
Sure.
I just inherited this house from my father last year. And my wife and I and our new baby are planning on moving back, hopefully within the next year or two. We currently live downstate Genesee County outside of Flint. And the reason we're applying for this is to hopefully make a little bit of money so we can spruce up our property down there and get back up here to eventually live in the three seventy-six house. So I'm not, you know, trying to run a business or anything. I'm just trying to make some money off the property. Well, before we come up here. And I'll welcome any questions since we get to it.
Thank you. Any further public comment at this time? Okay. Then let's move on to new business, item six A. Eric?
As the Planning Commission is aware, we kicked off our master plan update process, hired Short Elliott Hendrickson, Short Elliott Hendrickson as consultants to help us complete that. And they were at a, I think it was the most recent meeting, or two meetings ago, June twenty-sixth, detailing their proposed public participa, public participation plan. At the last meeting, we did review their draft survey, and we had lengthy discussion about changes and edits that needed to be made. So the purpose of this agenda item tonight is included in your package is that updated survey with your comments and edits incorporated. And we would be looking for a motion of approval on this so we can keep that process going. I will note that they do have Short Elliott Hendrickson and township staff have a stakeholder meeting planned for Friday, August second, from eleven to twelve thirty here in the Township Hall Boardroom. I believe the community room was already reserved. And you will note that this is the day before Community Days, which they, as you know, they didn't plan on, or they do plan on having a boot that. So like I said, and there's a little detail about their Community Day appearance or their plan. So like I said, we, the survey is in your packet tonight with your edits incorporated, and I would be looking for a motion of approval for that so we can keep moving forward.
Any discussion by the commissioners?
I have one other edit that we maybe can add on number twelve. I'm thinking it would be good to know if people own property in Marquette Township, so that would be, and that maybe isn't the correct way to phrase that. But they don't live in Marquette Township, but they own property in Marquette Township.
Which one are you referring to?
Twelve.
Oh, question number twelve.
Mm-hmm. Someone pointed out to me that some people, maybe many of us, own property but don't live here. But I do live here, yeah, so that's clear.
So you would suggest having a box?
Mm-hmm.
And it would say, what, again, do you own property?
Own property.
Own property in Marquette Township.
How do you want to, how do you suggest handling this, Eric? Eric, because I have I submitted some edits, but I didn't, they weren't reflected in this. But so, and other people here may have some changes and so forth. Do you want to vote you know, individually on Commissioner's suggestions for further edits or?
At the previous meeting, we just kind of went one by one.
Okay.
Talking about edits and suggestions, and then after that, we were, we weren't looking for a motion that night.
Okay.
And obviously, we are to help keep this timeline moving along.
Okay. So the chair, the chair would entertain a motion with respect to question number twelve on the proposed survey to include a box, checkbox with the phrase own property in Marquette Township.
I, sorry to interrupt, but I think we could collect all those edits or comments.
And do it at once. Okay, if that's, that's the way you want to do it, that's fine with me. Okay, so that's one. Any other commissioners have suggestions for changes or edits in this survey?
I had, that's, okay. I had on one, on question one, the second answer is continue local road maintenance program. That's just like the road commission, but I know we don't really have, I don't want to have a false sense that we have control over, like, the roads.
Question one, you said?
Yeah, the second. But maybe that's fine to have, just because we do have a road commission committee and we can continue talks, but it sounds like we're going to continue loc, you know, and we don't have that control to continue the
We don't have the control, sure, but we do have the village and then the road committee, and so there is some local, when I say local, township input on road maintenance, but you're right, that it is ultimately up to the road commission, so.
But that's fine to keep in if that's people's top priorities. I just was kind of.
I would say I think most people are aware of that, that I mean, I tell it to people all the time, but that we don't own the roads, so ultimately, we're not in control of them. But we do have some say, so.
The only other thing I had was on question twenty-two, it is, I just didn't understand why we have to describe who we are. Like, what does that detail? Like, I was wondering if they could, what, what type of information do they need that for?
In my past experience, when you're applying for grants, it's good to know the mix of nationalities.
Good point.
Yeah. I know there are many universities that require that on their grants.
So this could ultimately help us with a grant?
It could help us with the data that we could then fill in on the grant application, so, yeah.
I didn't have anything further.
Unless you're, yeah, just one in, question one, it says encourage the development of obtainable housing.
What does that mean?
You know, Steve, I'm glad you mentioned that. I thought that I had some questions about that, too. The, the one following that says incentivize more affordable housing, and both of those seemed a little duplicative. So I was going to suggest, I don't know what obtainable housing is, but I was going to suggest encourage development of obtainable housing and more affordable housing, and just make that one item. And then you'd save one question, or one, you know, one line, but I don't know, but Eric, what is obtainable housing?
That's a good question. I mean, I obviously, it's not defined here. I would assume it's something along the lines of affordable or workforce, or many of the other terms that we've used and talked about here before. But I personally would agree with Danny that I think those could be combined. And still kind of hit on the same data or same type of information we're looking for, so.
If those are combined, would you have any objections?
No, you know, I just, I just don't know what the definition of obtainable was. I didn't know what it meant. What's obtainable housing?
It sounds like housing.
That's here?
That's here. Encourage more housing, that doesn't. Okay, well, okay, what about the, is there a consensus to combine those two and just say encourage development of obtainable and more affordable housing?
Could potentially even just say encourage the development slash affordable, encourage, yeah, I mean, I think you could even make it shorter. And if you're confused about what obtainable housing is, certainly our customers that are going to do this survey are going to be confused.
Do we think, is it the consensus of the commissioners that obtainable equals affordable?
Well, it could be that we could just say affordable, right?
Well, if we feel that way, we can amend this. How do you feel, Bethany?
I feel like they're close enough. I know a slight change in when you say obtainable, and then when you talk about affordable, it does have to do with some kind of income ratio, but I don't know exactly what that is, and I think for the purpose of this survey, they're pretty close to the same.
So you would strike one and just leave it affordable? Is that okay with you, strike obtainable?
Yeah, and it's in the first choice, second choice, and third choice. Item two, so that they should probably be edited in there as well.
Okay, so then the consensus is this item number one should read encourage the, encourage development of more affordable housing? And then make the changes throughout the document to reflect those? Okay? So encourage development of more affordable housing. Okay. Okay, anything else, Steve? Okay, I have a, that was one of the things on my list, too, I thought it was duplicative. And I missed the last meeting, but prior to the last meeting on July eighth, I sent an email that was forwarded on to Lori and Brea of SEC. And I had a suggestion to add something about the environment. And I made a note in that email that when they were here and did the mentee app exercise among the audience here, what, what do you think about when you think about Marquette Township? The overwhelming response was beautiful. And so I took that to mean, it doesn't mean a ponderosa steakhouse or a new, you know, coffee shop or whatever, it means the environment. But I, nowhere in any of these questions was there any mention of protecting and preserving the natural environment, even though our master plan has several sections that talk about protecting the environment and the emphasizing the majority of land use in the township is natural environment. So having said all that, I would make a suggestion that there could be an amendment. There's a there's a item number eighteen, which is next to the last on question number one. It says management growth, manage growth with best management practices. I would suggest that we could amend that. Oh, I just want to comment, that's, that was similar to what we had in the two thousand seventeen survey, which said managing further growth. Anyway, I would suggest that we change that to say manage growth with best management practices to preserve natural environment. Or manage growth with best management practices to protect natural habitat and green spaces. So either one of those would be, I think, would bring in the element of protecting the natural environment. We do belong to CAFIF, the Climate Adaptation Task Force. We had a climate, climate adaptation resolution, but nowhere in any of these documents does it talk about preserving our natural resources. So that would be my suggestion.
Danny, can I interrupt?
Of course, I'm done.
What, how, instead of changing that one, I'd certainly agree with changing that one, but what about just a standalone? I know we're talking about limiting length, but when we're talking about combining one earlier in that question, right? Or is that a different question?
No.
No, it's that one. No, we're talking about combining it for the affordable housing topic. What about just adding a line?
Yeah, well, my,
Protected, preserve the natural environment.
Yeah, well, my suggestion to Brea and Lori, and in fact, Lori responded that she was going to work together with, she thanked me for the suggestions and said she would make sure to work with Jason to determine appropriate question. Apparently, that wasn't, they didn't have time to do that, but I would be satisfied with adding, we'd leave that management, or use best management practices alone and just add improve protection for natural habitat and green spaces. If that, if there's a consensus among the commissioners, if that would be okay. And you wouldn't add anything, you'd still have nineteen items. Is there a consensus on that, that we can just include that in the motion?
Sure, I'll make that.
How about you, Linda?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, and then, of course, if there's any, you know, as Steve pointed out, if there's any additional edits throughout the document that need to reflect these changes. Okay, so any other changes by any of the commissioners? Okay, then the chair would entertain a motion to amend the survey by adding the following language. First of all, to item number twelve, question number twelve.
If, if the commission is amenable to this, I think a motion to approve, maybe approves is the wrong word, but a motion to approve pending or
With amendments?
With amendments, as talked about. I've made notes here. We've got it on recording.
Well, let's, let's just make sure, I'll just reiterate them all, so, okay. So the, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the survey with the following amendments. In question number twelve, to put a checkbox in the phrase own property in Marquette Township. With respect to question number one, with respect to items number seven and eight, to combine those into one to state, quote, encourage development of more affordable housing. And with respect to, and with respect to number and also, I should say, to add a item to question number one to, quote, improve protection for natural habitat and green spaces. Is there such a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay. Move on to item number six B. This is a special use permit, a public hearing for a proposed short-term rental in the rail residential area at three seventy-six County Road five fifty, with all the details as stated in Agenda Item six B. And the applicant, Mr. Pierce and Mr. and Mrs. Pierce are here. If either of them wants to address this again at this time, they can come forward before we open the public hearing.
I think what I said earlier, I guess I have nothing more to add.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give a little rundown here. So we have received a complete application for a special use permit to operate a short-term rental at three seven six County Road five fifty. The Fetch GIS The Fetch GIS parcel map is shown on the left, and then a, I'm not sure if that's an official survey, but a survey-type document is there, shown on the right. Like I said, the subject parcel is located in the rural residential zone district. It is surrounded on all four sides by rural, rurally residentially zoned property. Neighbors within 300 feet of the subject property have been notified, fees have been paid. Star there showing the property, as you'll see that it is surrounded on all four sides. That green area on the top is a little off on that line, so I guess you could say it's kitty-corner to that green resource production zone property. I believe that's the Middle Island Point property. Or one of them that they own, maybe not the one with the houses on it. But that shows the zoning, there is a layout of the structures and a legal description. And there is, there are the properties that were notified, so yeah, as you can see, that is not the Middle Island Point property with the homes on it. But that is the capture buffer that we directly notified. And then here in green show the approved short-term rentals, yellow being the pending one tonight. And I believe that's all I have, that is all I have on this request. I'd be open to any questions. Like Commissioner Ferraro said, the applicants are here to address the commission if they wish, or answer questions if you have any, so.
Just to, at this point, we can address some of the questions that were raised with respect to the short-term rentals on 550 that were raised by Bonnie Johnson and Terry Chotoshu, sorry for pronouncing your name. I think one of the questions was, are there any plans to, at this point, to your knowledge, to have any further short-term rentals behind 550, behind Phil's at 550?
As far as I know, as far as staff knows, as far as the township knows, no, there is not. However, that's not, we can't speak for the property owners, we don't know what the property owners are thinking or planning. But at this point, there are no pending applications from those property owners, nor are there any hypothetical plans, as we'll often discuss with property owners before they officially apply. We've had no correspondence with them, probably since the most recent ones on that property have been approved. And that's not what individual property owners do with their property, that is not really something that we can fully control. We can require, or we can require property owners to go through processes like these, but we can't, I can't say, Mr. Pierce, you need to put a zoo on your property. That's not something that we do as the planning commission. We review and consider requests from property owners as they come. And in that, for that particular property with the 550 store, there are no pending applications.
And to address a comment by Ms. Johnson that, and which was responded to by Mr. Commissioner Haggenin about that everything is preordained before these meetings come on these short-term rentals, can we share with the audience and the citizens here that in fact, on County Road 550, we have denied two requests for short-term rentals because they didn't meet the appropriate standards for, under our ordinance and for other reasons? Isn't that correct, Eric?
Correct.
And as far as the comments regarding the blight ordinance, or the blight which came up, those will be addressed later during comment, or we can address those during our commissioner's comment at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Because as Steve pointed out, we're working on that. Okay. Anything, any further comments by commissioner before we open the public hearing on this?
Yeah, just one question, Eric. Has Mr. Pierce, have they been apprised of the notification that they would lose their homeowner's exemption on their property taxes?
They have, yes. For 14, if you rent out the property 14 days or more, that PRA goes away. Yep.
Okay. Then on item number 6B, we will open the public hearing at 7:42. And at this point in time, any member, any person present can again make a public comment or additional public comments or anything you want on this particular topic.
Yeah, I'd like, I guess I need to apologize.
You can come and stand at the podium, Ms. Johnson, thank you.
I need to apologize.
And identify yourself again for the-
Taking for granted, I guess, because that's what it feels like.
Identify yourself again for the record, just for the record, that's all.
Bonnie Johnson, 450 County Road 550.
Thank you.
Anyway, I want to apologize for assuming, yes. Sometimes it feels that way. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this point? Yes, sir.
My name is William Quail, 580 Brickyard Road. While we are also here seeking a short-term rental, I would like to make a point, and that is that it was brought up, there are properties that are late written on 550, I've seen them. We have a place out in Big Bay, and we go by them all the time, and I wonder why they are looking the way they're looking. But I know, I know the challenge. My sister was a zoning compliance officer in Ishprum for many years, and she faced the same situation that you're facing when having to deal with these properties. But I would like to make this point also, in that these places that are doing the short-term rentals, it's in their best interest to make their property look as beautiful as possible to maximize their rental income. So I think if you've had the short-term rentals, you're going to notice that, oh, they're painting, they're fixing it up, they're making sure that the property is clear, they're making sure that it looks very nice in the neighborhood, because that's in their best interest. And that's just one point that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quail. Any other public comment on this particular agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:47. All right, any discussion by the commissioners?
Have we gotten any correspondence regarding this?
No, no great, no over phone calls.
Linda?
So Eric, sometimes, sometimes we have the planning department tell us that they recommend everything is in order.
Yeah, we've shied away from doing that, staff has. You will note in your staff report that, under that, I forget what it says exactly, the recommendation, review recommendation, we've switched from saying we recommend approve, approval or denial, we, and we state simply that we do not note anything to impede approval pending public comment.
Oh, okay, okay, just because we've seen that before.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying that. The interesting thing, I was just at a MTA conference, and there was discussion about short-term rentals, and one of the things that we ask, and I was just reading that, is that people assume short-term rentals will have little or no impact on the use of emergency services. There is some impact on emergency services occasionally, so there potentially could be, as you have more residents in a house and they transition, that that does impact our emergency services sometimes. So just so people kind of know that, we just had an event, I think, on the shores of Lake Superior, and you know, you just never know. So there is an impact, maybe not more than otherwise, but there's an impact as we bring more people into our community. So that's my comment.
Any further discussion among the commissioners? Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion on item 6B.
So I'll make the motion that we accept the proposed short-term rental land use at the property listed. It meets all of the criteria that we have listed, and so that's my recommendation.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion among commissioners? Okay. I believe this requires a roll call vote. Mr. Haggenin?
Yes.
Ms. Cody?
Yes.
Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Motion passes unanimously, unanimously?
I will follow up with you guys in the next couple of days, and do not feel like you need to stay for the rest of the meeting. So-
Baby might be getting fussy, so.
He's being good, so I think we probably will take off. Thank you.
Yep, I will follow up in the next couple of days.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Moving on to item number 6C. This is a request for a special use permit, and this is a public hearing on that topic for a proposed short-term rental in the rural residential zoning district located at 580 Brickyard Road, with all the other identifying information as stated in item number 6C. Eric, do you want to?
Yep, so staff has received another complete application, short-term use, or special use permit application for a short-term rental. Subject property is located in the rural residential zone district. It is bordered by resource production zoning to the north and rural residential zoning to the southeast and west. Neighbors within 300 feet of the property have been notified, fees have been paid, and the applicant was made aware of the potential property tax implications. Fetch GIS is shown on the left there, outlined in red is the subject property. A survey is on the right. Star showing the location, a little zoomed in for, to be able to see too well, but you'll notice that again across, or not across, but to the north of the property is zoned resource production. There is a kind of outline of the structures on the property, legal description, and the 300-foot buffer notification. You'll notice obviously that quite a few, or considerably fewer property owners made aware of this one than the previous. That's not to diminish, or, the notices are published in the mining journal as well, so I mean, it's spread out to the public that way in addition to those direct notification letters. Here is the map showing an approved short-term rental in green, and then the pending one in yellow. And I, the dot, the yellow dot is back there, as the commissioners will remember, that is where the house is on the property, is way in the, kind of the back of the property, so there is some, even though the properties are directly adjacent to another, there is some distance between the two properties. That is all I have on this application. The applicants are here to address the commission if needed, and much like the last one, staff did not recognize anything impeding approval of this one pending any public comment.
Any further comment by the commissioners before we ask Mr. or Mrs. Quail to address the group?
Eric, a couple slides back with the house floor plan, I think that was for the, that one, I think that was for the 550.
Oh, is it? Okay. Well, I apologize for that. Yeah, it says the legal description. Blame it on, blame it on Jason.
We won't look at that slide anyways.
Mr. and Mrs. Quail, do you want to make any further comments at this point?
I'm William Quail, 580 Brickyard, I'm sorry, 580 Brickyard Road.
Share Quail.
And this is my wife, Share Quail. We have been doing work on this home for quite some time now. We purchased this home a while ago, we have not lived there, but we've been fixing it up, and we're trying to make it into a desirable piece of property. It was, it was a little bit run down when we got it. It had been left go, and we've been trying to bring it back to life. The reason that we're doing the short-term rental is that we want to leave that option open for us going forward. We're not sure if we're going to be able to move in there, or if we're going to be doing a short-term rental at this point, so we don't have definite plans. If it is a short-term rental, it's going to be for a very, just like four people at a time. It's not going to be like, we're not going to put bunk beds in the closets or anything like that. So it's going to be very scaled down and occasionally rented out, so it's not a, kind of a high-traffic kind of place or anything like that. I know there's concerns with traffic in that, on the roads, and we're going to have this somewhat restricted with who we want renting there and who we want coming in. We're good friends with everybody on Brickyard Road. We've been talking to the folks for a number of years. Ken Bullock, right next door, is fully aware, I talked to him on the phone the other day, and he's fully aware of what our plans are for the property, and he's just fine with that. He trusts us, we trust him, we watch his place when he's gone for the winter and things like that, so we have a very good relationship with Ken. We don't really know the folks next door that have the other short-term rental, but we've never had a problem with, with any guests at their short-term rental, never had any interactions with them or even when it was rented, so we have no problems with them at all.
Will you be managing this?
We'll be managing it ourselves, yes, absolutely. We live in Marquette, and we're up at Brickyard Road almost every day, so.
Do you intend to rent it in the winter?
Yes.
And who's going to maintain the road for the renters? Okay.
I do. I've got a, I've got a plow in my truck.
That's a long ways back there.
Yeah, it is, it is, but the truck does okay. I plow in the winter. We've had it open in the winter all, all the while we've been, last winter was easy.
Is it my understanding correct that this is a budding or adjacent to the Peters Wildlife Preserve?
It, it doesn't directly-
It doesn't.
-adjoin it. Because the other, Catherine Porter property, which is right next door, is the other short-term rental, and then the Peters Preserve is on the other side.
We have a parking lot that's adjacent on our property line.
And will the people that short-term rent from you have, be able to access the Peters Preserve?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of room.
That's, that's part of the, the kind of people that we'd be looking for, is people that are doing hiking and things like that. My daughter is very active with 906 Adventure Team, and has, has friends that look for places in Marquette. They would probably love to rent our place.
Any further questions of Mr. and Mrs. Quail and the commissioners?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will open the public hearing on this matter at 7:40, what am I saying here?
54.
7:54, thank you, sir. 7:54 PM. Thank you, Steve. Okay, public hearing is open now. Any members of the public want to make comment on this particular topic? Okay, hearing none, public hearing is closed at 7:55. All right, any further discussion among commissioners on this topic? Okay, chair would entertain a motion on this matter, on 6C.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit request for this parcel as listed in item 6C of the Wednesday, July 24th Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none. So a roll call vote. Mr. Hakinen?
Yes.
Ms. Cody?
Yes.
Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
Fire was a yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Quail.
Thank you.
Like I told the previous applicants, I'll follow up in the next couple of days and don't feel free, or don't feel like you need to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, six D is the preliminary planned unit development plan application review regarding the proposal by Renovari to develop affordable housing. We have had a prior work session on this. Eric, let me ask you, is there a, in terms of the procedure on this, please remind me, is this something that's just going to be a presentation tonight, or is it something that requires a vote of approval by the commissioners?
So what we, what staff would be looking for tonight is approval to schedule or a motion to schedule a public hearing. Presently, we are at, and I've, I've got my zoning ordinance open right here in that Article thirteen planned unit development. We are at section thirteen point oh five, which is the preliminary P U D plan application. That's what we've received, and that's what they may have tonight.
When do you anticipate the date for this public hearing?
We suggest, or we advise scheduling it. I want to make sure I get this right, just for the record. Scheduling it for Wednesday, August fourteen at seven P M. Would be the suggested public hearing.
Okay.
So, so I'm going to be out of town then. I have a conference to be at.
We'll make sure you're, we've got a quorum.
Okay, unless you want everyone to be here. So I, so again, if you want all five of us to be here?
We only need three for a quorum.
That is correct, but is there, so this is my question, is there a reason that we have to do it on the fourteen?
That, I
We don't know. Okay.
I mean, there, I, off the top of my head, no, no specific reason. It's just to keep the application moving through the process.
Isn't there a thirty-day notification requirement?
There, there is. I think it's thirty days.
It's the twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Or maybe it's fifteen days.
I thought it's fifteen days.
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days, okay.
It says it's this, the notification timeline is this, zoning administrator shall publish and send out public notices in the same manner as prescribed for special land uses per sec, per section sixteen point oh four, et cetera, et cetera. So for special land uses, that's a fifteen-day notification requirement.
In the event that there would be a lack of quorum, it could be continued to the next, to his neck, right?
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
I think one of the things that's, that we should note here is that Renovari has applied for only a six-month extension on their option to purchase, so time is of the essence. I suppose there would be, there may be support at the township board level to renew that if necessary, but so it's coming up in the fall.
Right, I think in October.
Yeah, we can let them move this along.
Yep, so a little bit more if we're done on that topic. A little bit more about the application. I think everybody's pretty well familiar with the concept. Staff has reviewed the application, and you'll note at the end of your staff report, right before the review recommendation, when that, where that proposed public hearing is noted. We did note some items that were absent from the application, including a stormwater management plan, a location of trash, trash receptacles, and method of screening, proposed sign locations, dimensions, and specifications, and a table with all deviations from the established zoning area. These were relayed to the applicant, and the applicant did indicate that they would be submitted prior. Assuming that the public hearing is scheduled tonight, those items would be submitted prior to that date. And this is consistent with some other, some of the other P U D applications we've seen. They haven't been complete at time of the preliminary application, which is what we're doing tonight, and we've required that they submit that complete application before the final, before, or excuse me, before that public hearing and before that final P U D application is submitted. So it is consistent with previous P U Ds, and I would also note with that list of agencies that we are required to notify, we did not receive any adverse comments from any of those agencies. So on that note, that is really all I have on this. Brian and Megan from the development team are here tonight to answer any questions about the plans that are in front of you, and like we discussed, staff would recommend scheduling the public hearing for Wednesday, August fourteen at seven.
Mr. Savalainen, am I pronouncing your name correctly, sir?
You got it.
All right, you're the civil engineer, so identify yourself for the record, please.
Brian Savalainen, the civil engineering consultant is project. Address is thirty-two twenty-four U S forty-one West, Marquette.
Do you want to say anything to the commissioners at this point in time in terms of, you're the civil engineer, so how's?
Yeah, really, I guess, you know, if you want me to kind of explain utilities a little bit, like the storm, you know, management question that came up.
Well, how, one of the things that was discussed by Ms. Ferrari and her partner at the township board meeting, and also I think at, at the township planning commission meeting where they're here for work session, was the civil engineering aspect of this in terms of timing and completion in order to, to get, to get things moving on this. How does it look in terms of the civil engineering?
Oh, I'm really close. I mean, the plans you have are what's in the machine right now, and it's what typically happens, I've been through some of these P U Ds as well in, in the application, till we get a chance to sit down fully with your staff and determine, you know, some of the exact locations of the the water sewer, storms, water improvement. A lot of times like our drain reviews don't even go to the review consultant until we're, we're after, you know, so. So those items are there, and those, those will be on that next.
Has there been any work done at the property at this point?
No, there's no work being done.
Good, but you've been up there and surveyed it?
Yeah, the, the survey's been completed by, I believe Tri-Media Consultants did a full topo survey of that, and I've worked preliminarily with the township staff getting as built on water sewer that's there right now, and you can gladly do that if you so desire.
On this, on this, this plan, which is the utility plan?
Yep.
You see there's a little green?
Can you put that on the?
There's a little green, yeah, there it is right there. What's that little green, whatever?
That's going to be the primary detention, stormwater detention. Basically, the whole site grades towards, towards the road right here. There is a little bit of a swale in the back and a drop when you look at the full contour. So stormwater will be intercepted on the street at about the halfway point and directed be behind some of the housing. There'll be initial stormwater basin placed in here.
What's that green rectangle or whatever is it?
That's riprap.
Riprap?
Yeah, just a cleaning mechanism for
That's in the swale?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is basically just exaggerated ditch be, behind the homes. There's, there's a little bit of a berm here between the, the roads and stuff naturally. So this kind of forms naturally. The, the outlines here are actually contours that I've worked in the, this, you know, just this particular plan doesn't show all those, but then a primary basin is here, which this whole property does have a very small piece, and this was, you know, your, the township's
Schwemburg Park.
So we're using that same element, but we're going to be retaining the stormwater on site. There's plenty of room to do it. The old highway came through here, there was a curve through here. So several utilities actually are on that property through easement, so it kind of blocks us off from even being able to use this corner. So this is basically a green space, ideal spot for stormwater, and, you know, it'll keep site distances and stuff.
Were there any wetlands on this property?
There's no wetlands on this property.
Okay. Where, where in relation to this, now I'm looking at this, this one here. Eric, can you put that one up there?
This one?
Yeah. Where in relation to this is the, is the current park, is the current Schwemburg Park area?
Down here.
Okay, so there's a, there's like a, this border of trees, and then there's kind of a ravine going down?
Yes.
Up to the park, okay.
Yeah. The, this is the retaining wall behind Walmart, right there, and then that's Goodwill.
So there's a, there's a drive that goes probably close to the north line of that property line back towards Goodwill and to so is, what, what is that right now? Is that just a road of convenience for someone?
I believe it was. I don't know what the exact.
So that's, that's not an easement?
It's not really a road.
That's not, there's no, there's no legal right to use that road at all?
No.
We've had some discussion on whether, you know, we would make that through road. I did in the grading, keep it very close to, this is where the, the drive was. Should there need to be the emergency access, or should that need to come through there? It's a very simple modification to the plan, but right now the idea was this is separate house from the ideas and bring, you know, this, this was always intended for the highway, you know, and their own accesses, so to prevent, you know, traffic from these areas to start using this, which they already do. I use that gravel road all the time to go to the coffee shop there.
Is there any discussion about any kind of walkway to connect
Yeah, actually
this to the, to the commercial area there, the coffee shops and so forth there on forty-one?
Well, the idea is an internal, and you can see we have a walkway back up here into the, into the commercial area.
Okay.
And then we also are extending a walkway down to the, the existing walkway there.
Okay.
We did think about it, but there's no, there's really no identifiable trail that comes in the Schwemburg Park, you know, but we would have, be acceptable, like a non-paved thing, if one existed. That's the idea is to be able to make this affordable walkable to the adjacent.
If, if that, if there was a trail connecting the, the housing project to the Schwemburg Park area, would that be on the property that Renovari is developing and would own, or is that on township property?
Well, we would make a connection to it through the property that they own, you know, to, to do the whole.
I'm just saying, if you want to connect, like, that, that
Yeah, we could, we could do an intermittent connection here or something. The timing right now, the only one we can identify is this one right here that actually has a handicap accessible walkway too, so that's why we're connecting our sidewalk at that point. So we actually have a hard surface connection there.
And that goes to Schwemburg Park, right, that walkway?
Well, it would come to, it ends there. There's quite a bit of right-of-way in here where a trail could easily be extended in here, and the grade's not bad in there to do something like that.
And that would be, that would be on, on property that is part of this Renovari project, or is that?
I would think it would be within the right-of-way.
That's a right-of-way.
I don't want to speak exactly for them, but I think they would be open to that type of, that type of option.
Okay.
Especially if it's, you know, like, you know, just a, a gravelled surface or something that's just a typical bike path or.
Because then you have the, you have the, or an iron ore heritage trail that's
Yeah, that's not that far from down there.
Yeah, but I mean, if they could connect it up through the Schwemburg Park area, that's right up, that's connected, you know?
Yeah. No, I'm sure, and I think Megan would agree that would probably be a nice thing.
I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, it's, it's going to be a private drive?
Yeah, it'll be a private drive, but the way the easement's going to work out, because the, the utility is just on each side, we'll have a full easement that'll be like forty to fifty foot even covered.
But the county road permission won't touch it for plowing, maintenance, anything like that?
It's meant to be a private road right now still, yeah.
Where's your snow storage areas on there?
That's a good question, but I'm going to assume that we'll probably put quite a bit down here. The cul-de-sac gets pretty tight. We will add the center.
Yeah, that, that cul-de-sac doesn't meet county specs, does it?
Yeah, it does. That's actually a county.
What, what's radius on that?
Forty-two in the middle. It's there. It's that county standard for subdivision.
Okay, so
And firmers.
Okay, so, so when the plowing contractor comes in, he's going to plow all around that cul-de-sac, and then how's he going to get it into a retention basin?
Yeah, well, we wouldn't put it, the retention basin's quite a bit over here.
Yeah.
We would have room around here. It might have to be hauled. You know, we, it, you know, we may have to bring a trillion heavy storms, you know, it's possible that it may have to be.
Okay, so I noticed that you've got a cul-de-sac there with trees in it?
Yeah, it looks like there's some.
Yeah, and, and your, in your, in your utility plans, you're crossing through that center aisle with, with sanitary, with water, all that kind of stuff. How many trees are going to be left in there?
We're not going to place trees over the town. We got to, within ten feet of each of the water and the sewer, you know, make sure it's, we haven't finalized, I think, the final planting with utilities yet at this point.
And those, those were existing trees we were trying to save. They were original maples that were in
Yeah, no, I got that, but on your utility plans, it shows the, your utility is crossing right through the center of that cul-de-sac. So you're not going to save a lot of trees when you're putting water lines in six feet deep, are you?
Yeah.
We're still working on coordinating those.
I may have to move in a little bit or do something in there.
Okay, so there's
But it's, you know, there's, it's a high density thing, so it's pretty tough. The lateral laterals, I've got to get through that.
So now, I, I see that little, the little walkways there. Are those raised concrete walkways? Is that curb and gutter in there?
Um, yeah, they are, it is like, it's like a gutter shaped thing.
Is it asphalt?
I did it more like, no, it's, the concrete's going to work for it there, but it'll be similar to, to like the wedged asphalt where we'll do that, and actually, that's why I have it, I believe I have wedged asphalt to the face of the
Okay, so, and are those going to be paved drives for each, each place?
Yeah, these are all paved.
And it's all paved?
Yeah.
Okay, and so how wide are those little sidewalks in front of them? About fifty feet wide, forty feet wide, thirty feet wide? Every, 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 every house got a little, what, thirty-foot sidewalk in front of it, and then asphalt sidewalk, asphalt?
Yeah, those are just five foot wide.
So are those going to be handicapped, accessible ramped, every one of them?
I don't think every one of them is, or is, I know
So you're going to have people going outside in the, in the roadway in wheelchairs and stuff instead of on the sidewalks that don't have ramps?
Yeah, so there's no handicap required locations on this P U D yet because it says condominium association, but we will plan some accessible units.
Because I, I think every sidewalk in the city of Marquette, there's a ramp on and off the curbing.
Yes, in city property.
But you won't have those on this.
Actually, there's, this is our biggest grade changes in here. Most of that will be, so it's a matter of, of getting through that point. I know I'm under five percent, because we're trying to stay underneath the, the fire department likes to keep the roads under five percent, which in this case, we can actually do it.
Are, are the roads going to be built to county spec as far as, you know, subgrade and final grade and gravel and asphalt?
Yeah, it's the same plan for, you know, depending, well, actually, the soils there are pretty good, so.
Okay, so, so how are you going to control water from flowing into driveways?
It's all in the gutter line of the, of the, the street. We can add some details.
So you're going to, you're going to have a gutter pan through in front of everything?
Yeah, everything here, the drives, and everything new drain towards the street, and then on the storm plant, our first collection point is in this area before the, the steeper section, and then that stormwater is put into the basin area back here, and then we have another set of basins at the drives.
So how much of, how much of a gutter pan are you going to have for a driveway there?
It's just like a foot and a half. It's real, it's only like a three-inch.
Well, what's going to prevent water from draining off the, off the slope of the, of the road and flowing into driveways?
The, the road is sloping this way, and the homes are sloped towards the road. The, the whole thing is drained towards the road.
The homes are all raised a couple of feet above
Yeah, I don't think there's a full grade line out there.
Steps up to the home.
But you can see here, this is a
Now I see your proposed grades on there.
See that the gutters are at the low point, and this all drains See that the gutters are the low point, and this all drains towards the road. Everything works out to, to drain towards the settle, center of the property.
Mm-hmm, okay. And have you figured out a price per square foot for those, uh, bit, uh, structures, the homes, duplexes, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so all these homes are around four hundred and sixty square feet, and I could not answer for Renovari what the exact cost is.
Based on your knowledge as an architect, and you're designing the homes, so you'd probably have an idea, right?
Um, yeah, but I don't want to put a number out there that I cannot stand behind for the developer.
So a, a five hundred square foot, uh, place, how much you figure that would cost?
So, these are two-story homes, so it's a thousand.
Thousand square foot, okay.
And I think, you know, for their goal is, I think, around two fifty to three hundred. But we've all been shouting out the words affordable and attainable tonight, and these are attainable. This is workforce housing. This is our teachers. This is our fire department. These are our.
Nurses.
People that are working full-time, first-time home buyers. Affordable housing is for subsidized people, subsidized families that get grants from the tech, from the state.
You know, I may be old school, but three hundred thousand dollars doesn't, you know.
Can I finish my statement, please? Um, affordable is for people that are subsidized and for the people that are limited on income. They cannot go above a certain income, and so they cannot continue to work. Some of them can't work full-time because then they don't qualify for their subsidies.
Okay.
So this is attainable.
Okay, and what, what do you, do they anticipate how much the homeowner fees are gonna be for maintenance and plowing and that kind of stuff? Any idea?
I, I have no idea what Renovari has entered in for that, but I'm sure they will have those answers at the next meeting with a public hearing.
Ms. Hornboggin, correct?
Hornboggin, yes.
Hornboggin, yeah. Uh, Renovari was here, attended our meeting virtually, uh, several weeks ago.
Yeah.
And gave us detailed prices per units.
Okay.
And they talked about, uh, various incentives and so forth. Have you had any, uh, contact with them regarding what they represented to us previously?
Um, I know Barry was at that meeting. I was not in that meeting with Barry.
But you have, you have no knowledge of that?
No, I don't know.
So you have no knowledge that there's been any change between what Renovari told us and what you're today, okay? Any, uh, further comments, questions by commissioners?
Yeah, uh, how are you gonna separate the, uh, the north line of that from the, the commercial development there? Are there gonna be plantings in there, fencing in there, or are they just gonna be looking at the back of that, uh, that building there?
We have plant fencing along the whole north property line.
Fencing, okay, how tall?
I think it's a six-foot wood fence.
Six-foot fence, and are they, are they two-story homes?
Against residential, yes.
So in a second story home, you can, you can look in the backyard of that business, I guess, eh? Okay.
It's urban.
There was some discussion, and I'm sorry I can't exactly locate it, about what the county road commission was willing to do or not do? Is there some issue with the county road commission?
Not that I've been aware. It's, you know, I apologize. It's been a couple of months since I've worked on this last and was not part of the Renovari meeting. But I have not, typically, when there is an issue regarding design or something, and, um, I think Eric would have mentioned that it did, all of this did go all correct to agencies. They typically didn't contact me if there, there was an issue here, but because typically what they do though, when it's not gonna be a county road, they're like, you know.
In, in terms of, uh, uh, fire safety and emergency services, is this plan, in terms of width of the road, turnaround, is this in compliance?
It's, it's, it's a two-lane road. I think it's twenty-six foot of pavement. There's, uh, the radius, like you said, is the, is the county standard. Um, just so that if in the future sometime they decide to try and make it a county road, that potential is there. And typically, that's at least my practice in trying to obtain that, um, the, uh.
They'd never, they would.
Fire marshal would have brought up issues.
Would they get a sixty-six foot wide right away in there at those structures? The county won't, county won't take it. The county won't take it without a sixty-six foot wide.
They would have to widen that to something, but you can't, I think the, the whole thing on the easement and the right away thing comes to do with the size of the lots. And me, and that's why it's a PUD.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I got that, but as far as the county accepting that as a county road, they would never do that, cause it's not.
Well, now they wouldn't, but who's to say fifteen years from now?
No, 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 I'm saying actually, can you get a sixty-six foot wide right away in there without going through a middle of a building?
Oh, yeah.
You can. It's only twenty-six five, six foot wide road.
Well, if you took that and, you know, the, uh, or the scalable.
Yeah, show, show me where the right away would be on those five structures on the south.
These would be tight. These would probably be right up to it.
I could say they'd probably go up through somebody's living room at that point.
We have a, we have a drop here in grade, and that's why they're a little bit tighter, so. But I mean, we can, all those dimensions are added in the, in the plans, and it's hard to do all that stuff, and then you get turned out at the first meeting, and then it's like, you know. That's why there's steps, you know?
Any further questions, Steve, or?
I'm good.
Just have a, just have a line in, in Ms. Hornboggin? Any other questions, discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Um, all right, so the chair would entertain a motion on item six D to schedule a public hearing on this, uh, PUD. Um, as described in item six D, um, for the public hearing to be, uh, occurring on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. I don't think this requires a roll call vote, does it?
I do not believe so.
Yeah, okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Apologize. Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
Can I just ask, Eric, for, on the August fourteenth meeting, then we'll see more information, and will it be the same? Just because it's a public hearing, it'll be a public hearing plus more information.
Correct, yeah.
Will, uh, will the, uh, will either Jill or Shannon be attending either in person or virtually?
Talking with Jason today, it sounded like one and/or both are planning on attending that meeting in person, as far as I know.
And can we, uh, can we have a shirt, can we have Ra- Randy Retary in the building? Because he seems to be the whiz at, uh, Zoom. Last time Renovari was here by Zoom, uh, we had to hold a microphone up to Jason's computer rather than.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of.
I, I do believe they're planning on attending in person, but if it is a Zoom setup, we'll make sure that our technology is squared away.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, item number seven, any unfinished business? Apparently none at this time. Uh, item eight, correspondence, uh, eight A, DDA minute meetings, Eric, come.
Yeah, and A and B here really, uh, nothing to comment on them. They're just available for your review.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, C, uh, meet and greet for the Michigan Veterans, Veterans Homes, what's that about?
Yep, this is largely for your information. It is, as you'll see the date on there, it was yesterday that this happened, so it's a day late. Um, but Michigan Veterans Homes did hold a open house of sorts at the Ordoq Brewing Company in Marquette. Um, to answer questions and talk about their proposed, proposed site, so.
Okay, any surprises that we know?
Uh, I did not attend, but as far as I know, no. Um, and I, and not to put Lynn on the spot, but I know nothing more from what we discussed at the previous meeting.
I went last night. I was able to speak to the, the boss, and. I don't know, I didn't get her business card, but she was in charge, and I can't remember her last name. She was the one that's coordinating the whole thing, and then the fellow who's gonna be, I think he's gonna be here in Traverse City right now. Gosh. Spoke to both of them for like an hour each. It was their two hours. And got a lot of information, because I, I know the fire chief was concerned about how many extra calls there were gonna be, and are we gonna have to have an extra mileage? And buy more equipment and have more staff, and, and I approached that with both of them independently, cause I didn't speak with them together. And I've got the fire pager, and I, I hear the whole county's calls every day, like I would know what that is if I had my pager. And I think in the last five years, six years, I've heard one call to the veterans facility. And I mentioned that to Jason, and I said, they don't get calls. So my question to these two officials, veterans officials, was how do you handle doctors and nurses and, and what do you do about appointments? And do they have, you know, vehicles or buses, or will you use us for transport? And they're pretty independent. They don't, you know, if something happens, like a heart attack maybe or something, they may call the county. One four one or something, but they're pretty independent, and they want their people to be taken care of by their people. So I, I haven't even told them this yet, but they don't see any reason that anything would be increased. Unless maybe if someone were there visiting, and, you know, they had a slip and fall, they would call the ambulance, you know, the person themselves. But otherwise, it doesn't look like there's any big impact.
As far as you're concerned, everything's a green light at this point?
Yeah, they kind of expect to break ground this fall, which is just amazing. They have until December thirty-first to have all their ducks in a row, uh, because otherwise they'll lose their money. And Ann said that she had to grapple to get money from all the different agencies and, and divisions and everything else from the state and federal. Um, what was I just thinking too? She said, oh, and I did talk to Pete Dukes about this too at the veterans, at the, uh, road commission. In fact, I told Cangis this. I said, if they're gonna put this in here, they're gonna come in and ask for abandonment of the road, and they're gonna spread it this way. It'll actually be that way, but, uh, he says, oh, they'll never do that, and I said, yes, they will, and sure enough, that's what they did. And that's how it's gonna be designed. Um, so the front entrance will come in through Venture and block the road, and that's the part that they would. Land in or, you know, ask to be closed. Um, the problem is, the road commission owns the road, so the process for having that happen, especially since it's only part of it, is a big hullabaloo. So Pete Dukes' engineers at the road commission kind of came up with a way to extend Venture around, and they have two different ways of doing it. Um, so Venture will continue, because the study that was done shows six hundred cars a day through there, and they couldn't believe it at the state office. So that's a plus too. We won't lose really access to Wright Street. And I told him, I said, you know, we've talked about this at the board level, and I'm kind of hoping that them being here and having more traffic will help us with Forestville Road. And she said, well, what do you need? And I said, she said, I thought that was gonna be fixed, and I said, well, no, actually, Jen Hill put the garbage on it. We had the funding, you know, pretty much set up for. So she said, well, that's very possible that maybe, you know, it'd be just the fact that there's more traffic.
Well, it's our veterans and our veterans' families.
Right, and staff, you know, so I thought it was very good talking to both of them, and I told them pretty much the same things. So they're both kind of aware. Yeah, I wasn't gonna miss that meeting, for sure.
Okay, let's, uh, any other discussion on this point? All right, um, Linda?
Um.
Nine A Township Board Report.
Yeah, I wasn't at the last board meeting, but, um, Jason did share stuff at that board meeting, so. We didn't have any big things on the agenda for the board meeting, and you should be getting the minutes, is that correct? Everyone gets the board minutes electronically?
Okay, uh, nine B Recreation Committee Report, Eric?
Yep, they met last week and discussed the survey, um, and I did fail to mention under item six A that a recreation-based question was added. Um, that is question, and this is the question, and that the rec committee kind of came up with, question five, I believe. For each of the following recreation opportunities that Market Township could potentially develop, please rate the item, or please, please rate them on your opinion of importance. Um, so very similar to the structure of the other questions in the survey, and it includes pickleball courts, off-leash dog parks, sledding hill, roof over alliance field ice rink, outdoor amphitheaters, splash pad, disc golf course, and then an option to enter your own. So, um, that's kind of, again, what they talked about, and that question was added. Uh, road committee, I'll keep moving along here. We meet next week, um, did not meet last month, or did not meet this month, I should say. Uh, and then nine D Planning and Zoning Report, uh, really, nothing to report as far as development goes. I will take this opportunity to kind of discuss some of those property maintenance questions and topics. Um, regarding seven sixty Lake Enchantment, the pre-trial conference was today. Um, I'm, it was in the afternoon. I didn't receive an update from Zappa. I anticipate on getting one this week, as far as what the next steps are. Um, and I do anticipate getting a court date too, uh, where Zappa, myself, and the defendant will be at. So not much of an update, but that's what I have at this point on the property. Um, and then regarding the Fisk property of five fifty, I know that Ms. Johnston left, um, so this won't benefit her. But we've had ongoing, I talked to the staff person from Eagle today, um, that I've been working with. Uh, and she says they've been putting some pressure on him as far as letters and getting out there for inspections and, uh, corresponding with the owner. I had previously made them aware of seven sixty Lake Enchantment, but we discussed that today too, uh, and kind of came to the point of letting this court case or this court proceeding run its course before they, uh, start applying pressure from their side. Um, I have sent pictures, and again, they're aware of the state. I've described it basically just as bad, if not worse than, maybe not worse, but just as bad as the property on five fifty. Uh, as far as the materials present and things like that. Um, but yeah, that's what I have on property maintenance at this point. I've been working on some of those action items that we discussed at the last meeting, and so for our next meeting, uh, what would that be? The August fourteenth meeting, we'll have another agenda item regarding property maintenance and that ordinance update and things like that.
Yeah, I think, I think with the last meeting, you had, we were, under the current, uh, ordinance, there were a, uh, fine and fee structures. What, what did you make of that? I mean, shouldn't, couldn't fines be levied now? I mean, this has been ongoing for years and years and years, and it says after the first year, after the second year, after the third year, and every day, nothing happens. You get fined a hundred and fifty, three hundred bucks a day.
Yeah.
So what, why, why is, why is that not happening?
I, staff asked that question of attorney Zappa, um, and we have not heard back yet, but I, again, when we do, that is an avenue that myself personally would be more than happy to explore and pursue.
Because, because just from my perspective, you know, this, this, this court judgment, pre-hearing, post-hearing, after hearing, before hearing, nothing happens. Something happens, thirty days, do it, nothing happens, it gets taken care of, and the next year, it's worse. So I don't see anything coming out of this. When it's a citation, is, is there, is there a fine that goes along with that? I mean, I don't, I don't understand why it just takes forever and nothing happens.
You know, I missed the last meeting, and I'm sorry I did, because I understand it was an extensive discussion. I've got the blight at Lake Enchantment, and the pictures that you sent to all of us were shocking.
Well, I don't, they don't even do justice.
I understand that, and I understand a member of our commission went out and physically saw it and was aghast at what they saw, and was even more shocked than the pictures. Prior to the last meeting, I had made a suggestion that why don't we invoice, invoice, invite, uh, attorney Zappa here? And I know it's a township expense, and, but on the other hand, attorneys have to make a living somehow, you know? Um, to attend one of our meetings, and I'm not sure, um, when there's a public meeting, you have an attorney present. You go into closed session, does the audience have to be excused?
Mm-hmm, you can only go into closed session for certain reasons. Buying property is one of them.
But not for this. We wouldn't have, you could have an open discussion. I don't care. I mean, open discussion's fine. But why couldn't we have, uh, attorney Zappa here and a copy of the blight ordinance? But why couldn't we have, uh, attorney Zappa here and a copy of the blight ordinance? And so then there could be specific questions like, okay, you know, like Steve just mentioned, why can't we impose this fine immediately, or why can't we consider amending this to make this, the fine more egregious? You know, five hundred dollars a day or a thousand dollars?
You can make it five hundred bucks a day.
You can't, under the current ordinance? Oh, okay, well, so there's a lot of questions that we're, we're all getting secondhand, because we never had a chance to address, and this, this is a topic that has been going on here now for at least two, three years, as far as I remember. And, and maybe it would be worthwhile to put an end to this, to get the attorney here and to have him specifically answer questions. I'm in favor of that, I don't know if any other commissioners here are in favor of it. Are you in favor of that?
I'd, I'd like some answers.
Would you, would you be willing to have attorney Zappa here?
I think I should probably not even say anything and just let other people decide, you know, I have, I have a fish, you know, I have a dog in this fight.
How about you, Bethany, would you think, have an attorney here might help answer some of these questions?
I think as long as we give him our questions ahead of time, so he comes prepared. Because if we just, um, if he just shows up and we throw these questions at him, he, he's not gonna have the information we want.
So require us to have the, the blight ordinance sent to each of us, and then we would then have time to, the, raise some questions, and then, then you could schedule something with Zappa.
To the point of Steve's question of regarding the fee structure, I mean, that's a question that I have out to him, waiting on an answer. So I mean, some of the questions that we have discussed at like the previous meeting and meetings before, those questions are out there, waiting to be answered.
I don't mean to imply in any way that you're not adequately representing our interests or anything like that. It's just that sometime when you have the person
Absolutely.
in front of you, you know, they, we can say, hey, we want this, and it makes more of an effect, that's all. Okay, well, maybe, I don't know if we have to get approval from the township to have an attorney present? Okay, we don't, according to township's.
It's gotta be scheduled, he'd have to, he, I don't know how many Wednesday nights he has something at seven o'clock, I don't know if it's every Wednesday.
He's pretty busy.
Because we, that's one of the reasons we, when we switched our days from Tuesdays to Wednesdays, we backed the meeting up to five thirty, because he needs to be out of here by seven.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's every Wednesday, or if it happens to be the first and third, like our meetings, but maybe a work session would be easier.
I was just gonna suggest.
Sure.
It's a little more relaxed.
Non-regular meeting work session. That's something, I'll bring it up to Jason, that's something we can explore.
Okay.
So we should let Jim know too, because he's our chairperson.
Any announcements?
Can we go back to blight for a minute? Because I wanna know what's going on, what's going on with Dyright, because again, I keep getting.
Another person in this week about that one.
Which one is it?
It's on Dyright Street.
Two, two, three, three, Dyright.
Heading east from here, it's a mess.
Yep, um, we've got ongoing enforcement there, they've gotten the, the three letters before the ticket, so the next step is a ticket.
And, and you know, the unfortunate part about the ticket is some of this blight stuff is probably some, something other than, they, they don't have any money to pay the ticket to begin with, I mean, you know, there's just so much with all of this, um, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Well, what I think, if there's any fines, they should be put on their taxes. And then again, you know, I don't, there was a mention that, well, you know, one person is more responsible for the mess, but if people own that lot, they're all responsible for what goes on in that property. So if that gets put on their taxes, I think that would be a good impetus, because that way they can't just ignore it. You know, if their taxes aren't paid, then there's a serious ramification. So, you know, I think that's where those fines should be levied, if they're not, nobody's gonna start handing you five hundred bucks a day, but if he's put on their taxes.
I, I think, um, I think oftentimes there's more issues than we know about property maintenance, how people take care of their property. You know, and I, I, I get it, I mean, I get it, 'cause the people keep.
I think it's inexcusable, what's your excuse for having junk and trash? Because you don't have money? People, that, that is, that's inconsequential, as far as how much money people make and how orderly and clean they keep their place.
Well, Steve, it's not always money, some, there's, there's a lot of.
I know it's not always money, so I don't think, you know.
There's mental illness, behavioral health illnesses, there's lots of things that go into this, but I agree, I, I'd like Roger to come and we can look at it. I, I mean, I would, I would say, let's bring the dumpster over there, put it outside the yard and say, we'll help you throw it in, but I, I don't know. I don't know, yeah, I mean, it's all over Trowbridge, it's not just.
All I know is that a blight ordinance is supposed to prevent the value of other adjacent properties dropping in value.
You're right.
And that's what happened to mine.
So.
And that's what is happening to mine. And that's, I find that to be unconscionable, that the township would let that happen. When I maintain my place as fine as I can, and I still lose value because of somebody else's neglect, and the township does nothing to back me up.
So I, um, did I, maybe I already said this, that I got, I attended the conference in Escanaba, the MTA conference, and one of the sessions I went to was hot topics in planning and zoning, this is the last one, it was presented by, I think he is the MTA lawyer. And I have a handout. Um, it, and I'm happy to give everyone a co, a copy. I thought it was really good, um, it has the three hot topics, which are the mining things, the gravel pits, um, blight, and short-term rentals. I mean, I think those are hot topics for our township, and they were for all, all the townships that were in attendance at that workshop, they were hot topics.
You can have Andrew make copies for us or send it to us, and then find an email or whatever, that'd be great.
People do that.
I ran off a couple copies for Jason and myself, so with one of those, I don't need that one. With one of those, I'll write off copies and put them in everybody's mailbox.
And, and I think the thing is that, um, those are important issues, no matter the size of the township, there were people with six hundred residents or, and then there were people with thousands and thousands of residents, and it, it seems to be the hot topic issues. So they, they do have some recommendations. I think short-term rentals, I'm just gonna say this, 'cause we're on public comment, I think short-term rentals, we're at thirty-one, and we have a whole bunch by Phil's store. And, uh, you know, I know the state, some people at the state level would still like to take over short-term rentals, but that's a lot of short-term rentals in a small area. And, um, I know we're working on an ordinance, so it'll be good to see that too. Yeah, I'm concerned, thirty-one is a lot, in my mind. But I can tell you, there's a lot of short-term rentals out there. I just saw one the other day that came across my computer, and they're not on my list. So that means there are short-term rentals out there that people are advertising that never came to get.
That.
They never came here.
Certainly may be the case, I will note that we do not regulate owner-occupied short-term rentals, so if the owner is staying at the property at the same time that they're renting out a room, or renting out the unit in the basement, or renting out the unit above the garage, we do not regulate those. So those listings may be out there, um, I'm aware of a couple particular ones myself that have been brought to my attention before, but we do not regulate those.
Other thing is, we don't annually have someone pay a fee for a short-term rental license, right?
We require them to obtain a business license, which they pay a fee for annually.
Okay, all right, they did talk about that, too. So what if they don't pay it? Do we follow up? Do we even know if they don't pay it?
We, as far as I'm aware, all of them have paid for this year, but if, say they didn't submit those applications, those required applications, we could revoke their license or suspend their license, or.
It's, it's a lot of follow-up, this is all a lot of follow-up, and I know there's not a lot of time for all that stuff. Lynn and I know that, yeah, it's a lot, but there's even someone advertising a campground in Market Township, I went, really? People need to watch what they put on Facebook.
Okay, any further, uh, announcements? Okay, uh, we're now down to the public comment, does the lone member of the public want to comment?
One other thing, Eric, just from your, your rec committee, um, one of the other things I mentioned at the vets' swari I explained to both of them how we thought we were gonna get the forty acres, and then it went down to thirty-eight, and then it was sixteen, and then five, and it was gone. But anyway, they're amenable, I think they said, they talked to Jason or John about setting aside two, three, four acres, and I'm guessing it would be over on this corner, that they'd be able to have something, they even said an amphitheater. So, three or four acres is a lot, but I don't know. But anyway, that's a possibility, that they'd have something there, just so you know.
Are they gonna have to come to us for a site plan and so forth?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay, so we can raise that topic at that point too, great.
And I'm concerned about, just because of the plans that you got from Renovari is the snow load, one of you guys mentioned it too. I don't know where they're gonna put the snow.
For the vets?
No, for Renovari's.
Okay.
They'll have to haul it like they do at some of the other businesses.
They'll have to plow it somewhere.
Yeah.
We plowed it and then we hauled it away.
It's very expensive.
They don't have any place to dump.
So they're affordable house, they'll go up, 'cause they have to pay X amount per month.
Pulling their fees. Raise that when they come for the public hearing.
So you have your mortgage, plus you have five hundred dollar HOA fee or whatever that will be every month.
Yeah. All right.
I did hear that back there. I said, it does snow storage, I mean, yes, it can get moved, but that costs a lot of money to get snow shipped out. And that just raises their HOA fees, which is monthly. If you're maintaining roads and your taxes and your insurance, then, yeah, those HOA fees could be five hundred dollars a month, and calculate their mortgage.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know what, um, McBank subdivisions HOA fees are. I don't remember them telling us, maybe they did, maybe they did.
Roads are a lot shorter too.
Okay, number twelve, any additional comments by planning commissioners? Uh, I, I have one, I'd be, on this survey, I, I'd be glad to volunteer time to stuff envelopes so that the survey can be mailed, rather than just online. If it's sent out with the monthly garbage bill, I don't know if that's feasible or not, uh, it would be in the same envelope, you'd probably pay a couple pennies more on your nonprofit rate, uh, but I'd be willing to, to sit down and stuff some envelopes.
I don't think you could, actually.
You can't?
Yeah, I've even volunteered to try to do some stuff in the office, and you're a part of it, so you can't.
Oh, so we'd have to get people.
It'd look like, you know, you were stuffing the ballot, or whatever the term is.
Stuffing the garbage.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I've asked a couple times if I could put, like, a sheet, or we could put, you know, information in the utility bills, and they bucket, I don't know why, in, in the office. And it's a few more cents that you just pay for the extra page. The main thing is, the folding machine only allows the two pages, so somebody'd have to do it by hand in the office. So it's not only the extra postage, but then you gotta pay somebody extra to sit there and do it. So they really, they fight me on it to try to do that. But, um.
Well, what do you think about?
We could put it on the back of the calendar, it's not, we could put some of it, you know, a few of the questions, but that's not gonna be as comprehensive, you only get the one page.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, a lot of people don't, they don't, you get so much stuff on your computer anyway, I, I don't know. I'm concerned about what kind of response we're gonna get, do we know, like, last time, it was it, was it mailed out last time? Or was it, uh, done by computer last time?
No, it wasn't much computer, it was mailed, yeah, and they actually did some phone calls too, I think, gosh, we were in the old hall then.
So last time, we actually did send out a paper survey?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Well, why can't we do that again?
The city did theirs online, and I think they had a pretty good success.
Did they?
Mm-hmm, they just had links everywhere and.
I think Brianna Laurie did say that they intend, and staff, we intend on having paper copies available, maybe not mailing them out to residents, but having them available here in some other places that are willing to keep a stack.
Could we follow up on Lynn's suggestion, and on the back of the calendar?
Just make a note saying, here's where they're available.
Big letters, surveys available, please go online or do something like that, so people are.
They're coming to community day.
When will they be available, Eric?
Um, with, tonight, with the approval pending the items that we talked about, I would assume beginning of next week, as soon as, it's pretty, pretty much as soon as they can get it updated. I know the, the online listing, or the, where it is, where it lives online, that's already live. They haven't shared it, obviously, but it's made up online, and it's simply a matter of updating it and getting that link distributed, so.
And how long will it be available?
They say like six weeks, or two months, or something?
Yeah, it was a
Yeah, I think.
Pretty good time, time frame.
So I was thinking of the, at the back of the calendar, Andrew has to have it three or four days ahead of the end of the month. So usually we all just, you know, the fire department or I'll have something, or Andrew will put something in, or Public Works. So scheduling it to get in there, it might be free for August, with some kind of, you know, you wouldn't even need the whole sheet, 'cause if you're just gonna put the link or the QR code, you can just do like a third of it in case Public Works or somebody else has something, and then run it again in September. Keep it out there.
So, so I live in a neighborhood, so I am actually gonna walk my neighborhood, but you, you guys don't probably have that available to you. Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm part of the Trowbridge thing, I'm just gonna walk around or invite them all to coffee on the street or something.
You know what we could do too, is take one of those sandwich boards and blow it up, have it just like right there when you walk in the door, and they can do the QR code right there. If somebody wants to do it easily.
Or pick up a paper copy.
Right, I mean, that's two options.
I think we're gonna ask the store, at that, I think we were gonna ask the store in Trowbridge to put it at their place, they're open a little longer, and people go in and out of there a lot. Yeah, so, but I do think they were gonna bring it to community day, so you'll hit a group of people there.
All right, any further discussion, comments? If not, we will adjourn at eight fifty-three.
I have one quick thing. On the Renovaro plan, I mean, he briefly touched that he was leaving the grading up by the Goodwill, just in case they needed that.